And I happen to train in this program. So the cost is actually pretty minimal comparatively to other programs. And the creators of Ufly actually generously have created a lot of things that they provide to educators for free. And the manual is seventy-five dollars per manual. And then there's some other materials related to that, that I plan to talk with the GMS team to see what those needs are. But I priced out kind of a higher end cost of what it would be. And it's just under five thousand dollars at the high end. And I actually, I happen to have extra funds from what was, well, thank you, budgeted for the math program that wasn't used. So it wouldn't be any extra cost. And then again, I would be doing the training myself, so we wouldn't have to hire trainers for PD. I've already talked to Mr. Mitchell and some of the other members at GMS about starting a plan for professional development training. It's, everybody's very excited about it. It was voted unanimously by the review committee to move forward. And I'm asking for approval tonight so that I can get going on getting things implemented so that we have a nice training and rollout happening and things aren't just, here you go, do it in August. Won't do that to you, I promise.
Okay. Thank you for the update.
She's looking for a motion.
I know. Is there a motion to approve and for funding?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Shoemaker, pay a motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Ames. Additional discussion?
Where do we pull the money from? Or does this, it sounds like there's...
I still have money in my textbook line. So it was leftover from the math program that was budgeted for. We didn't happen to need everything that was budgeted. So I still have funds in that line.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained. That carries five zero zero.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. So the next thing we thought we would bring, it's been a bit since we've talked about some data. And kindergarten through eighth grade, just finished. If you are even put it on the...
Yeah. Give it a little sec.
Um, so kindergarten through eighth grade, just finished the I-Ready diagnostic. They take it in the fall, in the winter, and in the spring. And ninth, tenth, and eleventh graders did the PSAT back in October. So I'll just wait for a minute before I start talking about the graph. Very slowly. Okay. So what you're looking at here is first, there's the table that shows what's graphically represented. The first slide is for math I-Ready. If you're looking at the graph, the top bar is the fall diagnostic data. And the bottom bar for each grade level is the district. And it goes from dark green is your mid to above grade level. Then light green is early on grade level. Yellow is one grade level below. Then the darker red is two grade levels below. And the lighter red is three grade levels or more below. Is that clear to everyone? So as you can see, from fall to winter, there's been a lot of growth, which is great to see. And it's not just in pockets, it's in each grade level. We've had some really good growth, especially like, there's been nice growth when we're looking at students that are performing at or above grade level. We also see reductions in students that are performing in those red categories. So those two or more grade levels below, those grade levels, those percentages are diminishing, which is nice to see. And there is a strong growth in that early on grade level performance, which shows that those students that are in those one grade level and above are kind of sliding into that early on. So the instruction and some of the interventions that are being put in place are showing some impacts. We do see quite a bit of yellow. And then when we're looking at the light green category in winter, we want to see more in the mid, because winter, we're in the mid-year. So when we're early on grade level and one grade level below, we want to focus on those students and intervene and kind of help push them towards that mid to above grade level proficiency in the spring, which if you're looking at it, like, if you really target and zone in, we can push those through. So that's math. Any questions on math?
Is there a way to get like cohort data for I-Ready scores?
I have it. I did go through, I went on a rabbit hole for a little bit, and I was like, okay, I've got to get something together for tonight.
This is great. I just, like, in looking at this, I'm just curious, I would be really curious to see like, another bar that just shows cohort data.
Yep. I did cohort data, not in this way, because if you, this graph is, there's a lot to look at here. So when you add more, it gets very, like, when I add spring to it, it's going to get very, there's going to be three per grade level. So I have it represented in a different way. For I tracked a fall cohort and then a winter cohort, because I wanted to see that where we're usually at and how those kids are performing through. So I do have that, I just didn't, yeah, so I can share it with you if you want, because you can join in on my rabbit hole. I was like going through all the day, I'm like, ooh, look at what's happening. Because there's a lot of nuances within that kind of tracking as well.
Now, Dr. Taylor, we're hoping in spring that we have even more green, right? Like that's...
Absolutely. The goal is to get even more green, especially when we're looking at the dark green.
Yep.
We want them in that dark green.
And then red to get really low.
We want the red to get really low. That's why when you're looking at the graphs and you see that red shrinking across, like, that is really awesome to see. Like, grade two team is here, hello. Like, look at that red, it's amazing.
Yeah.
Right? So that was, that's very encouraging to see. Any other questions on math? All right. So when we're looking at reading, it's kind of the same, kind of, it's kind of the same picture, right? We have, we do see a bit more green in reading. But again, we're seeing that increase in students performing at or above grade level across when we go from fall to winter. Strong growth in primary grades, which indicates that solid foundations are being built, which is only going to intensify when we implement Ufly, which I'm very excited to see what these look like next year. And then we still see quite a bit of yellow. But again, that targeted intervention and support, looking at where those skills are and getting those kids closer to grade level will be...
So just to use grade two as an example, because they're here, right here. So like, in reading right here, just to help, like, it's really awesome that if you look at the dark green bar for grade two, not only, like, and maybe it's not exactly this, but not only did they maintain the kids that were there, not only did they catch all the kids that were already on early, but they caught some of those yellow kids all the way up to dark green already. That's like, very, very impressive to move those kids up throughout the course of a year and a couple of months like that. Like, we should be applauding, you know, they're here, right here. But just applauding the work that they're doing to, as the year goes on, get these kids to the grade level.
They need to be.
And am I right, Dr. Taylor, that like, it would make sense that they're going to start lower on that, because they're just starting the grade in the fall?
Absolutely. They're going to start lower, especially to, you also have to think about the tool, right? Like, they're learning the tool, they're on a computer, they're little, and they're like, you know, and they're trying to listen to sounds and all that kind of stuff and differentiate between that. So there's a lot of different things happening. But there are, they are making really good growth, you know, attributed to all the amazing things that are happening.
Yeah. And we wouldn't expect in fall for all the kids to be on grade level at that point, because they're just starting the grade, right? Like, that should be a growth that happens over time, right?
Yep. And you also typically will see a lot of growth in the younger years, because there, all of a sudden, it clicks for them. And you guys know, when you see it click, it's amazing, and you're like, yes! But it happens at different times for different students. So we just keep going and keep targeting, looking at the data, seeing where they are, and moving them and growing them from there.
It's all good?
All right. So the next couple of slides are for the PSAT. So I want to point out a couple of things. So first, the ninth graders take the PSAT eight, nine. And then the tenth and eleventh graders take the PSAT. The PSAT eight, nine is a little less complex than the PSAT. The PSAT is really aligned with the SAT in terms of question complexity, vocabulary, all of that kind of stuff. So it really kind of ramps up. And also too, the benchmark cut scores rise with every single grade. So even though grades ten and eleven take the same PSAT test, those cut scores are different. So we need to take that into account when we're looking at these scores. And we can see, so for math, we can see that grade nine stayed above. So this graph shows the percent of students that met the benchmark. And in ninth grade, we are outperforming the state. In tenth grade, we're also outperforming the state. And then we see that there's a dip in eleventh grade, which there are some factors that we need to consider in this kind of disparity. And really thinking about assessment culture and mindset too, because as an eleventh grader, and you guys have probably assessed, we've seen this test, and we're like, oh my god, what does it have to do with me right now? And there's always a swing when we get to the SAT, because things now are like, oh, this is the SAT. Like, we need to...
And this is only one snapshot of one particular cohort. If we could see, you know, like, this is an example where I would like to see the cohort trends.
So, yeah, that's what I was going to ask, is like, can we look at this for the last five years or four years?
I also pulled, I have a folder with that data too, and I started going down that rabbit hole, but...
And then can we see SAT scores?
Yep, I have those too.
When did they take the PSAT?
That is in October.
October, okay.
Yep. So again, we're talking, it's start of the year.
Yep.
We're getting back into the swing of things. Now we have this test, it's a PSAT, eh, I don't know. You know, so there's a lot of factors. But it also brings up some good conversation too, like, really look in and dig deeper into the data points and see what those skills are, where are the students having a difficult time, and what's happening instructionally, et cetera, et cetera. Like, these just, these data points, again, they're one snapshot, and that goes with I-Ready, it goes with all of the assessments, right? Like, we've talked about earlier, a holistic approach to looking at data for students, not just considering one...
Right.
Assessment.
When do they take the SAT?
The SAT is coming, the window opens in April.
So like, I'll forget, right? I forget after these meetings, but like, can you, at some point, can we revisit this with the cohort data and...
So the juniors will take the PSA, the SAT in the spring.
Correct.
So we'll have two, a data point from the beginning of the year and the...
And I will say, without having all the data in front of us, this is the trend that I've seen since I've got to Campbell. Each year, the PSAT is relatively low, and then the SAT could do better. They improve the next year, they improve that year. Last year was our best performance on the SAT for our current seniors.
Seniors, yeah.
They outperformed state in every section, which was, I think, a first since I've been here, so.
Right.
I'm not super surprised by these, but again, as Dr. Taylor said, the conversation is further ahead alone today already around, you know, structure and practice in the classroom, curriculum, that sort of thing. It just gives us some really great data to look at and start making connections.
Yep. So if you look at, I mean, the same kind of trend going for reading, or evidence based reading and writing, we see ninth grade remained pretty solid, which shows a, it's actually a good transition of skills from middle school to high school. And then if we kind of dip down, but not by a lot, in tenth grade and then eleventh grade, and again, it goes back to the conversation we just had about, it gives us a conversation piece to talk about with teachers, look in and see what's happening, and then think of that assessment mindset and culture. So really getting into the key takeaways, all of this data continues to go back to the three focus areas that I set forth at the beginning of the year, which is the targeted interventions, data-driven instruction, and enhancing our curriculum vertical alignment, which we are well into the throes of, which is, has been amazing. And the learning outcomes task force and the curriculum review committee, all of these things are going to take shape and start to really drive us and move us into a really, we're, we're on a good, we're on a good train, right? Any questions or comments?
It's great to see data. I'm with you, I want to see year-over-year trends, right?
I put in a...
I'm really curious about the eleventh grade thing, like, this is not a criticism, this is just an observation. Like, in my previous school, we did not have the ninth and tenth graders take the PSATs, right? It was only the juniors in preparation for their SAT. So there wasn't a ton of wild swing, because it was the first time they were doing the PSAT, right? And I wonder, I was just thinking out loud here, as I saw this, you know, Sarah, Doc Taylor presented this to our group, you know, earlier this week and stuff, if there's a little burnout from taking the PSAT, when they, because it doesn't count yet for them, and that's why you see that huge swing.
The only problem with that, though, is twenty-one percent of the rest of the state is not as burnt out as Littrell.
That's what I'm saying, like, at Bo, they don't take it until they're a junior. Like, they don't take the PSAT.
Oh, I see what you're saying, because I see.
Now, that's a total, that, I may be totally off on the...
Well, that's why I was asking what the trend is, is this normal for Campbell?
That's what I'm curious, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess when you're looking at cohort stuff, I'd be, it'd be really good to know, are they taking three years or are they taking one year?
I won't speak for Ms. Nelson, but I'll speak for Ms. Nelson. We've had this conversation made next. If we wanted to stop ninth and tenth graders from taking it, we'd be more happy to do that as well, so.
Well, and there are some districts that they're taking it eight, nine.
So who's the, who's that decision with?
Schools.
Us.
You know.
We have to have some kind of standard assessment.
I think it's a philosophy, you know, like, and public philosophy was, the PSAT was strictly a, you know, the prep you for the SAT, right? There would be, when I say it was exclusively juniors, it's a little bit of, there are some sophomores by request that would take it, because we were giving a testing date that day, right? And it was convenient, and they could, they could do it. But it was a required thing solely for the grade eleven students, and it was advertised as this is your preparation for taking the SAT in March, so take it seriously, right? There are different districts that do it just like Campbell, a lot of districts do it like, like Campbell does, right? Where they have nine, ten, and eleven, take the PSAT. It's a good use of the day, because then the seniors are doing their, their senior, like, college application stuff and other things as well. But there's just different philosophies on that approach, so that's why I think looking at that cohort data could be really interesting.
Well, and I also think too, and I think I've talked about it before, is changing the assessment culture and mindset and purpose, because if we don't set a meaningful purpose, then it's not going to be meaningful, right? So there are useful ways, there are useful, useful things to this data and to taking this assessment that are multifaceted. So we just need to bring that to the forefront, so that it's not like, all right, we have to do this thing, because it's this thing that we're being told that we have to do.
And this will probably be like a shame on me moment, but Danny and Nick, any of your teachers, counselors ever really talked to about your scores on your PSATs, your SATs?
Like, talk with them, actually, to them?
Yeah, like, other than, hey, here's where your scores were.
It's more, it's more personal, like, you see how you do one, and if you have, if you like, want a better grade, you go study for it.
Yes.
Yeah. But there's ways that we can make that different.
Correct.
Give you like pencils and ice cream sundae. It works.
Pests and mints, remember that?
There's, there's that aspect, but also just talking about why we do it, what it is.
Exactly. There has to be a why behind every...
How it aligns with what you're doing in your actual classes and that sort of thing. And if you didn't ask where, you know, we, we fall short a little bit with making those connections. Good update. Anything else?
No.
Any questions for Dr. Taylor? Thank you again.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Jumping ahead, we have the public minutes from January fifth.
I'll make a motion to approve them.
Thank you, Mr. Shoemaker. We have a second by Mr. Plansky. Additional discussion on the minutes? All right. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, abstained, those carry five zero zero. Now we're on to new business, and we have...
Sorry, I just want to clarify, those are February fifth minutes.
Oh, that's right, yeah. You're throwing me off.
Sorry.
We called them, but that's the intention.
February fifth, two thousand twenty-five, yes.
I mistake, is the link correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
We just labeled it incorrectly. I apologize.
No, that's fine, I'm just making sure it's clear for everyone.
Yes. February fifth, two thousand twenty-five, thank you. New business, we have facility improvement committee updates.
We are moving so quickly.
Not progress discussion.
Oh.
That's next. So we have board appointments, expectations, and continued objectives. You want to get things kicked off here?
Well, I, I think, you know, just looking at the FIC, it's a board committee, correct? We're about to have a new board, like, that's the time of season we are. Places that I've been, this is a good opportunity to like, review your committees and how you want them to kind of continue to move forward. I think specifically with the FIC, I'm just going to stick in the school board realm, because that's my area, is working with you guys, the school board. We have two people running for two seats, and, you know, one of the candidates is currently the community chair as part of the FIC, right? If he's elected to the school board, then he can't be the community, in my opinion, can't be the community chair anymore. He could take over, you know, you could step down as the school board representative as the chair, and he could do that. But you would probably, I would recommend, need to appoint a new community chairperson or have that committee appoint a new community chairperson. So I thought it would be smart to use this as an opportunity to kind of go over your expectations for that committee. One of the other things is we are making, we're going, this next agenda item is making progress towards recommendation regards to Griffin. But as we've seen from the onsite insight reports, there's a lot to do with facilities for the district. So as, you know, the conversation shifts from like, all right, this is the direction we're going from Griffin, do we want to expand this committee? It's called facilities, it's not called Griffin Committee, right? Do you want to expand this to talk about facilities district-wide, right? One of the things that we've been working on is taking the onsite insight reports, transferring them to, you know, an actual plan, not just those documents, but starting with an Excel sheet and starting to map out when those things. It would be great to do that with that committee, who has, you know, the feelings of the community and stuff like that. So using this as an opportunity to talk about the FIC, it is a board, board committee, and it's at your leisure how you want them to proceed and stuff like that, if you're directive and direction. So it'd be a good time to kind of talk about some of these things before, you know, before we have elections and...
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. There was a lot of email exchange over the past couple of weeks on this very topic. So allow me to get things started, is that okay? So what was intended truly to be a thoughtful email, I guess, was not received that way. So Ms. Harrison, may I put you on the spot?
Okay.
When was facilities started? It's been years.
Yeah.
Right?
It was at least three years before the last proposal.
Right. So facilities has been a longstanding committee well before the Griffin Memorial Project, right? And that's my point, right? So the facilities committee has always been intended to be a committee that's looked at our schools, district collectively, and put together kind of a plan for aging infrastructure. It has been comprised, and correct me if I'm wrong, keep me honest, has been comprised of largely school district administration, and has largely had an open community seat for years, for a long time, because we lacked interest from a community member after a long time to fill that community member position, right? Fast forward to late two thousand twenty-three, early two thousand twenty-four, right? We had Mr. Oblenis, right? Very interested in the Griffin Memorial Project. I believe you came in because you were interested in why the school changed land positions, and that, that's kind of how it started, great. So you were asking great questions, you were heavily involved, you were certainly, you know, heavily involved, like I said, but, you know, really thought-provoking and challenging the status quo, which the board appreciated, I still appreciate, and really making sure that, you know, we're thinking about alternate options, again, heavily appreciated. And we, on January third, two thousand twenty-four, and in the minutes of that particular meeting, January third, two thousand twenty-four, stated, Mr. Cutter made a motion to have Mr. Oblenis join the facilities improvement committee as a committee member. Mr. Plansky seconded that motion, that motion passed five zero. That is, in my mind, an appointed position as a citizen rep to the facilities committee. That is not to be interpreted as a pre-willed citizen rep in a non-voting capacity. That is an appointed position as a voting member on the committee. But I'd like to open that in my thoughts to the board on what happened on January third, two thousand twenty-four, and how you view that position.
So I agree with that. I do want to clarify, though, that the rest of the community members that volunteered do our voting members. So they do have voting rights as well.
Okay.
By the, by the sort of charter that we've created, when we sort of really got a lot of interest in that.
I do want to say, and I just want to point this out just for your future, you know, I believe you will be elected again and, you know, possibly serving as chair. I just wanted to say, I wish this conversation had happened before you sent the email, because as, when you sign as chair of the Littrell School Board, it implies that you have the consensus of the board. And we hadn't discussed it, we had, you know, the matter hadn't even come up in discussion. And so I feel like, moving forward, I think best practice is to, you know, kind of refrain from, if you want to reach out as a, as yourself, that's fine, but just...
I didn't have this email from my personal email.
Yeah, yeah. But then, you know, the signature, it does make a big difference. So I, you know, I've, I've done it too, when, when I was the chair, and it's just, it's, it's important to remember that, you know, you, you can only speak on behalf of the board when we have consensus and when we've discussed it, or when, when you're representing action that's taken place. So that's just, you know, going forward, I wish you much, much success in that. So I do feel like it kind of opened up a can of words, but I'm glad we're having this conversation now. My feeling is exactly what that was. At the time, Mr. Oblenis was very involved in the, in the planning, and ended up, you know, actually fully supporting the new, the new building and the proposal that went forward. And, you know, I, I felt he was, he was a voting member at that time and, and in practice on the committee. I believe he, you know, acted accordingly, and I agree with you that it was an appointment by the board.
Other thoughts?
I would agree with what you said, that it was, at that point, it was an appointed position from the board.
Yeah.
Same?
Yeah.
Okay. So given that position, right, and just fast forwarding, so after this January third, two thousand twenty-four board meeting, then we... board meeting, then we fast forward to the March vote. The March vote failed in two thousand twenty-four, as we all know. Then in late March, at our second meeting in March, the board said, hey, we really wanna understand why this failed and what are we gonna do about it? And that's where this whole conversation about let's get a grassroots bottoms-up kind of team together and get representation across section of the community together and let's start to dig into this and understand it, right?
And the board representation, the representative of the board changed when we reallocated our committees as well. I just wanna put that forward.
Correct. So we put out a survey, right, so who's interested, you know, please let us know. We had seventeen or so people, in fact, I still have the spreadsheet where I collected the names, seventeen or so people interested. Those people then formulated the now facilities improvement committee. Many of those members are still in place. Point being, right, those individuals applied, so to speak, right? And are now community members that filled out an application, so to speak, and are or and are a part of the facilities committee not to be the same as an appointed member by the board to the committee.
Well, I don't know. I don't know if I agree with that. I mean, they serve on a committee and it's a subcommittee of the school board.
But we didn't vote.
No, we didn't.
That's the difference for me.
We didn't vote on the com- the community.
On a point of them.
Oh, right. We did not.
I think moving forward, we should.
Yeah, so I mean, I think what we're, I think what we're getting to is like there's definitely some refinement that we need to make with the FIC. I I agree. I think that what probably should have ultimately happened is we as a board should have, once the FIC formed and the the interest was expressed that we had that group of people, we should have formally appointed all of those people. Um, and so we can cer- we can certainly do that with this, you know, with this next round of, this next wave. Or I mean, we we could actually take action on it at any time, right? Cause we still are the sitting board, so.
Well, I think the next part of the conversation is, is what happens in March when there's a new board and all the appointments reset?
So I think, my feeling, tell me what you think, I I think the work we're doing would be very interrupted if we turned over the FIC every time we turned over the school board. Um, I do think, you know, we're, the the emails that are going back and forth are are raising a very interesting issue, which is what happens when there's people on the FIC in a community member aspect who then become members of other town boards? Um, and I do think that we need to address that, you know, we need to address that. Um, I tend, I I understand the longstanding practice. I tend to agree with it. Like I can't, you know, we're both on the board. We can't say, okay, well, we wanna be on also as community members so that we we both get a vote and that. It would skew the process. I think, you know, I think that the same should apply across the board. The community members should truly, that are voting community members should truly be just community members and not have other involvement in other.
Well, that was another question that I had after, you know, after reviewing everything, you know. We appointed a representative from the school board and an alternate for all for all of our committees. Is Peter an alternate? Or is he a second school board member on the board?
I'm not a voting member. We only have one vote.
Right.
So I participate in the me- I participate in the meeting, but I do not vote.
Right, but there have been times too when we've had two opposing viewpoints coming from each of the board members. And the role of the representative of the board is to represent what the board.
Right.
What the board decides and and and, you know, the board's desire, so.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think we voted on anything. I don't think we voted on anything.
Hasn't decided a direction, right? The board is looking for direction from this committee.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm just pu- putting, you know. It doesn't impact me personally, but I'm just, you know, kind of watching from the outside at this point.
I mean, I think the more, I I personally like having the more input. I think it's useful. Um, I think one of the things that we really fell short on in the past is just there not being enough continuous voices, not for us a lack of trying, but it just wasn't set up that way. And so personally, I think that that's been a real value add.
No, and I appreciate the work the committee has done. I just think.
Is there, is there, sorry to jump in, just listening. Is there any way to kind of split the difference here? Like, eh, for your board committees, you do update that every time you have a new board. So once a year, you'll go through and you might have the same people as part of these committees, right, or you might change it up depending on the makeup of the board and stuff like that. We think of the facilities committee, which is an offshoot committee of of the board. Is there any way that if someone standing hasn't changed, right, you're still a community member, you're still a part of it? Like, you're not gonna get, you don't have to be re- renewed or revoted in or reappointed if there's a new board. But if the dynamics of a person has changed, either they were a community member and now part of a board, whether the school board or budget budget committee or board selection, whatever the case may be, then you have to have that discussion. And then reverse too, if someone was, you know, part of one of those boards and wanted to be engaged as a community member now in that type of situation, could you also like have a discussion on appointing them then? Like somewhere to have that, cause I think if if this is a successful committee and and it hasn't always been fun, but the we'll talk about progress being made with it, and it's just gonna continue in the years ahead and we look at at it being a continuous thing, you're gonna have these conversations of people dynamics changing both ways, right, coming on and off boards as it is. So having some sort of protocol, it's it's different than these committees in the term that these are exclusive to board members, but like maybe you can follow similar practices when you talk about this committee and how you're gonna handle those type of things.
Can I throw a question out there? How, and I I'm honestly thinking I should probably know the answer, but how does the town do it with respect to the rec commission? That's an a- an appointed committee that falls under the select ward. They're not elected. They're appointed. I think same with planning and zoning, right? Capital improvement. Do those turn over?
They're appointed for X amount of years.
Okay, so I think maybe we need to be specific with that and then have our appointment cycles rotate. So maybe it's if there's six community members, two for, you know, every two years, but so it's the same, there is some overlap. And people know the commitment. It's not forever. You're not always appointed to the same committee. But I agree, I don't think there should be turnover necessarily yearly because you would lose some of the momentum you have as a committee, but at the same time things change and you have to take.
I agree with that. I think that that's a good suggestion. I think we do need to move to an ap- like it, they do need to be appointed across the board.
And and I think honestly, in the last meeting, I think everybody who was there indicated that they wanted to be on the committee going forward. Right, cause there's a real feeling that we're making some progress.
Which is great, right?
And you don't wanna.
I like the idea of having something, I don't know what consummation does, that there's two-year seats.
You stagger it.
Yep.
Yeah. I'm just trying to make the parallel of how we do this and I'm not sure we've ever really had a lot of committees that are open to public on behalf as a school board. They typically are made up of SAU employees, different versions.
Well, there's never been this much interest.
True.
Right, which is, again, a good thing.
And again, we would have gladly welcomed community input into the committee.
The fact that the meeting is now at five thirty and not at two or three o'clock in the afternoon.
I think it was more than that.
People to participate.
Yeah, I think it was more than that.
People are a lot more interested in what's happening and obviously facilities is a hot topic right now.
So I think that in March, it's an opportunity to reset.
Yes.
It's an opportunity to start fresh for all of us and all the subcommittees, right, and all, everything that we serve. And it's an opportunity to get this right and and do it openly. And if we're gonna stagger terms, we're gonna stagger terms. If, um, and I'll let you, you know, who who's ever gonna start in March with facilities? If that's you, if that's Peter, whoever's gonna do it, we can figure out what the right terms is. If it's one, two, three years, whatever you wanna do, give people a one-year out, if that's what they want, great. But I think that's um, that's probably the right direction.
There was at one point, and I again, I'd have to go back and look at the agenda, wasn't there, I don't wanna say rules, but bylaws that were drafted. I mean, that could be a good time to review those bylaws as well to make sure that we have in there a conflict of interest policy or anything along.
Dan has the by- Dan is like the.
He's the bylaw guy.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want, yeah, what, can we have Dan come up and answer some of those first?
Sure. In the FIC operations document, it states under memberships and organizations, now it doesn't talk about how the board, but it just says that appointments to the committee will be made by the facilities improvement committee when a vacancy occurs and be communicated to the school board for notice. An appointed member will gain voting rights at the completion of their fifth meeting and attendance. When a vacancy concerns, the facilities improvement committee will seek out volunteers for the community and will use multiple modes of communication to ensure maximized reach of message. That's how it's currently stated.
Yeah, so I think we probably need to amend that to be that the facilities improvement committee will make the recommendation and that the board will do the appointment.
Correct.
That's hard.
Otherwise, it's not right binding.
And then would you need to update that with like whatever your terms are?
Yeah, we would add the terms to that. And then I think we do also need to address what we were just talking about, whether uh, a member becomes a member of a board or likewise, a member of a board no longer is a member of a board, do we wanna continue to offer them?
Isn't there a language of the bylaws about voting capacity too? They're asked faculty members and faculty.
Yes, and I could tell that in the five years that I've been on the board, we have always had a select, in addition to the school, we've always had a selectman rep who had a voting member and a budget committee who had a voting member until, I believe, the winter of twenty-three.
Yeah.
When the budget committee voted to not have their representative vote on that committee.
Next, Dan.
Yeah, I mean, my feeling on this, eh, you know, just, I'm I'm really proud of the work that's being done by the facilities improvement committee. I think it was a good cause on behalf of the board to say, we're too close to this at this point. We need to go outside and we need to get fresh perspectives from people in town. Um, and I think as we have continued to, um, you know, there, I think we're still feeling out how this works. It's kind of grassroots. Because again, it's our first committee that is made up of more community members or voting community members than um, SAU and and board members. Um, so I I do think the election gives us the opportunity to refresh our, the bylaws as it relates to the committee, as well as our policies around that. Um, because you don't think of things at the time. You don't know they're gonna come up, you know?
Okay, any other conversation on this one?
So just, uh.
Yeah, so who's gonna do it?
Yeah, so what's the action item here?
Yeah, the action item is updating the bylaws.
The action item is updating the bylaws on the facilities, right? The action, the other action item is in terms of board appointments to the facilities is effective March. At our March, what is it, fifth meeting, the appointment that we made effective January third, twenty-four is reset. And that would have to be managed then by the facilities committee going forward.
Right.
So would it be the first meeting in March or the second?
Second.
The, sorry, the second meeting.
Managed by the facilities committee in the sense of making, making recommendations to the board for appointments.
For appointments, yes.
So would we need at facilities to discuss updated, so with the bylaws, updates, facilities, would they do it and then bring it to the board for approval? That's what we did before.
I would think so.
I mean, I think, I, but I do think that the board has ultimate say on.
Has ultimate say, but maybe the recommendations from the facilities committee on the updated bylaws to bring to the board.
I guess I don't wanna, my concern is we've given a deadline on a very specific item. I don't wanna take any of the facilities committee time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, coming up with bylaw changes, so I'm, I mean, I, it's not my.
I don't think that there's massive bylaw changes. I think it's literally just, what are the terms? We're gonna make the recommendations.
You would have to do at that time anyways.
Right, right, cause it's after elections. And then the only other piece of it is.
This is gonna impact Mr. DeWitt anyways.
Yeah.
So.
Right. Then the only other piece of it is how are we handling the additions to boards versus subtractions from boards in terms of.
Does that mean we have to set a number? Cause we really didn't have a number.
Yeah, I would say so.
On the board.
I would say so, and I would probably say you'd pro- you you might wanna consider setting voting as well.
Not opening it up to everybody. So right now, the vote.
We already do that. They're not, like, I'm a non-voting member, right? I mean, obviously.
Well, and anyone can attend these meetings. They're public, right? They're announced, they're recorded. Anyone can attend. Is there public comment at the meeting if someone's not on the.
No, there hasn't been, only because everybody who's there is typically a member. Although the 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 committee sort of found its own form. I mean, it's probably really twelve or fifteen people that are at eighty-five or ninety percent of the meetings, and there were, there were many more names than that that never sho- either never showed or showed once or twice and and failed, so. And we had it, we had something in the bylaws about attendance, right, Dan?
Yeah.
If you miss so many, so many things in a row, you.
Yeah, and we also catch membership, twenty members. There's a size to it.
That's a very large community.
It is, and that's maybe why we had seventeen, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, stuck to that number.
So, so just for clarification, what do you want us to bring back to you?
Proposal for revised bylaws, changes.
And I would think that would be.
Bring that to you before March.
They're not gonna meet before then.
Well, no, we are meeting, but we have a lot of work to do before then.
Now, would it make sense for that to be, I, this might make your decision. Does it make sense for this board to vote on that or the new board to vote on?
I think, well, we're gonna need to do, well, I guess we could always do that appointment. We don't have to do that appointment. We could do it the second mea- or second.
Yeah, cause you don't appoint your actual committee. I'm assuming, I haven't been here yet for a transition, that you'd not, right? You so, but and that's not that initial meeting, correct? You do you get recommendations on what people are interested in and then I'm assuming at the next meeting is when you set the appointments, correct? Or a future meeting?
We will try to add it into, uh, I'll talk to Dan about adding it into our agenda as as soon as possible. But I, once I give you an update, you'll understand.
I mean, again, this is sort of new in the sense that we haven't really had to appoint community members. And so when we're picking our committees as board members, a lot of the times, it's a lot of not it, not it, no, okay, you only have one, your turn. You know, as you go through, not everything, obviously, but, you know, it's it's certainly not, I don't know that there's a lot of fighting over who gets what.
So I I think it's okay to bring the, but it's your decision. I don't don't, I don't wanna force anything down your throats. But I think it's okay to bring those updated bylaws to the new board, right? You know, so like you wouldn't need to have this from the FIC for the next school board meeting.
I think that makes sense.
Because if you vote on those there at that, at that second March meeting, you're doing appointments when you're a- a- also doing your committee appointments for the board itself, so.
Would you like an update now? That's next on the agenda. You're good. Go ahead.
So we, uh, we had a very productive meeting, the last meeting. Um, we spent more time looking at the matrix that we created. Um, we had some conversation about prioritizing items, the, in the yellow, if you remember the yellow box, prioritizing items. Um, we had a kind of round robin conversation about the top five or so, saw a few trends in that. Um, and then people were gonna be emailing in there, like the remainder to to prioritize those. Um, but in looking at, so in in sort of looking at the survey results and looking at the matrix, we as a board voted to remove two of the options to recommend to the uh, school board. So we eliminated the new school option, the complete new, new building. Um, and we eliminated the repairs-only option by vote of the committee. So what we're left with right now is renovation, so renovation and renovation plus addition, we've kind of um, not officially, but we've kind of lumped together because ultimately, the scope of renovation could include an addition once we, like, if we put out an RFP, we feel like, or if we suggest that you put out an RFP, we feel like that could be broad enough to allow for in addition if, you know, it seems to make sense within the budget and within the uh, you know, confines of whatever the architect or whoever we work with recommends. Um, so that's one. And then the other one that we're looking at still, or still talking about is the shuffling grades, you know, seventh and eighth of the high school, stuff like that. Um, the continued interest in that is largely based around just the idea of utilization, right? I mean, so we know there's, we do, we have discussed that there are a lot of challenges with that in the sense that we would have to touch all three schools. We would impact all th- the operations at all three schools. But the sort of thing that we haven't moved past to a point of wanting to make a, you know, sort of decision on that one way or the other is just the utilization component of the space at the high school right now. So we have, uh, those are gonna be the basis of our conversations for the next meeting or two, and then we're gonna be coming with a suggestion.
I watched the last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I have some comments, if you open them. Um, I was relieved that you did eliminate, eventually eliminate the repairs only. I think a solution that does not meet the educational needs of our students is not, is, cannot be an option, cannot be the path forward. And I felt strongly about that, you know, the board and the survey results were very clear that the committee needs to balance educational impacts and money. And they were pretty, as if I recall correctly, they were pretty evenly, evenly matched. It was, there was not one that was of greater importance than the other.
The, the only one that was, so you had educational needs only, you had balance of the two, and then you had money only. And so if you lump educational needs and educational needs and money, because both of them express some regard for educational needs, it was, from the survey results, it was well beyond.
So the educational needs are important to both the school board and our voters.
Right.
Is what we.
But to the level of
To the respondents.
Whether they should be balanced with the financial considerations versus completely regardless of the financial consideration, that, that's where there was a.
Right, absolutely. So repairs only, to me, was a, a very financial situation. It was not really concerned with the educational needs of the, that we, that we had identified.
That was reflected in the matrix.
Yes.
So if you looked at the matrix, there was a lot of no's in the, would this, would that achieve those things?
Yep. I was very disappointed that the new build was eliminated at the same time as repairs only. And not only because I was a supporter of a new build, but it was the only option that met all of the educational needs.
So if you look at the matrix, we can meet a large, you know, you have to remember, you have to remember that we're talking about the balance, right? Because the, the majority of people wanted a balance between the two. We, we can achieve those with that. Like, I, I'll be honest with you about my, my personal view is I want a solution that's going to solve the educational needs and, and fix the problems, right? I don't, I'm not married to a new build versus a.
And let me be clear, I'm not either.
Right.
I am not.
My, my support for that was largely just based off of the fact that I, and this is my own personal belief, is that I think that once we start digging into walls in an old building, the price tag may be the same. But I, what I can tell you about the, the sentiment across the facilities committee, pretty unanimously, was that regardless of whether it's going to be more cost effective, which we, you know, we don't know, but regardless of whether a new build will be more cost effective, the perception is just too hard to overcome for us to make that recommendation. And that was, that was unanimous across the committee.
I disagree with that because of the survey results.
So the, the only, the only counter I will say to that, right? So I, I personally also feel like the survey results were an important metric, and I feel like we did as much as we could humanly do to try to get as broad of a sampling. However, we did only, only have roughly nine hundred responses, right? So at the end of the day, we have to, you know, there are people on the committee that are saying, well, that's not an accurate sampling. Well, maybe it is, maybe it isn't, but at the end of the day, it's a consideration that we, that we have.
I understand that, but the data implied two, two, that the, the, the data from the survey implied that there were two options that were supported by people who responded. And we cut one of them completely out. That's my disappointment. Again, I support a renovation and addition build. I think we can get there. I think we can meet all of the educational impact needs that we need to meet. I think we need to do that in order to receive building aid, because that's what we've been told. We need to meet all of the requirements that we said we were going to fix in our first application, or that needed to be fixed in our first application. And I think that if we're, if we're worried about the cost, I think we need to, I think we would be doing our taxpayers a huge disservice by not taking advantage of the building aid that we know now that we, that we are going to receive.
So ultimately, we're tasked with making a recommendation for what we think the board should put out for an RFP to do further investigation, right? And so our position, not, and this is not our official position, I'm going to leave the seventh and eighth thing to the side for a second. Because I don't know if that, if we come to you with that, then that's a whole different thing. But ultimately, we're, we're not, we're, we're not jumping to, this is exactly what's going to happen. We're saying, this is what we think needs to be investigated and how we would like the board to investigate that. That's not to say that if we hire a completely different architect who comes in and does all of the studies and all the plans, that they won't say, okay, the cost, you know, you're in, you're potentially in line for state aid. It, it may make more sense to go with something that aligns with the state aid application versus, you know, I, I don't know what they're going to say.
Well, yeah.
But ultimately, all we're doing is asking, we're, we're, we're giving you a suggestion for what to ask for, for an RFP.
My only caution on that point, and I, I totally agree with you and I appreciate that. My only caution is that when you put out the RFP, you're asking for a specific job to be done, as we did with Kyle Barker and the first project proposal. He came forward with a, with a recommendation, the board, you know, the, the committee came to the board and the board approved it. And that's what, what went forward on the ballot. We then received, you know, even though, as you know, because you were on the committee, we studied all of the different options. The, the pushback was that we hadn't vetted each one adequately. The reason for that was because we put out an RFP for a new build in, in many people's minds. And I'm afraid that if we only put out an RFP for renovation and addition, we won't do the background check to see does, is this what, really what makes sense before we have, before we put something.
So, I mean, it's within the board's purview to structure the RFP.
I know, I know. I'm just, I just want to, I wanted to comment because I'm not going to be on the board when this comes to a board vote. And that, that's besides the point. I just want to make sure that the facility understands, you know, kind of the implications of what I'm, what I'm seeing as an observer of these meetings. There's still, we're still just having discussions about how little can we do without bringing the building up to code? And, and that to me is the antithesis of, of why we're on this committee and why we're. No, 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 no. No, having a project that, that passes isn't better than having a project that passes but doesn't meet our needs. That's my personal opinion, and I'm saying it now because I'm here.
That's fine, but I think that what you have to understand is that this committee, we, we intentionally created a committee of community members with diverse opinions. And so ultimately, it is within the right of those community members, if, if their personal belief is that, I don't agree with that, but if their personal belief is that, it is within their right to express that. And ultimately, the checks and balances are that it's a committee that has votes. And so as you've seen, if that was the general sentiment of the committee, we would not have eliminated the repairs only option. But that's not the general consensus of the committee, right? So it really is about checks and balances. I agree with you on that. That I don't think as a school board member that that's what's right for our community to, to disregard education, but that's also doesn't seem to be the way that the votes on the committee are going either.
The other piece about, my last, and this will be my last comment. The discussion about redistribution of, of grade levels throughout the district. That, a redistribution of grades across the district, as we've discussed kind of briefly, impacts every student in the district, every teacher in the district, every staff member in the district. And it requires a lot more time and thought and planning on the part of the school board than, yeah, let's look into that and see how it's going to work. Like, when we, we've never actually acted on it, but when we proposed having a start time change and changing the start times at each of our schools, we had, we put a committee together, never met, but we put a committee to, together. And the plan was to study that over a year, just to decide if it was feasible to change the start times at our schools. Changing, redistributing, redistribution of grades is so much more involved with that. You're talking about planning, programming, curriculum, co-curriculars, bus schedules. I, I mean, if that is a direction the board needs to go in, that's, I would, I would recommend the board decides that quickly, swiftly, and, and take the year to adequately study it. That, that's going to require committee, community input, surveying the community, surveying parents and staff, and, and figuring out if this town even has the stomach to do that. I don't know that that can be an option, if that can be a decision to recommend or not recommend on, from the facilities committee. I think that has to start within the district and with the school board.
So the school board asked us to make recommendations from a community perspective as to what we think the community will support and what, you know, right? So at the end of the day, if the recommendation is to the school board that that's what we think the best option is, then yes. I mean, the timeline would be stretched out, the school board would have to do all of that investigation. The superintendent did present a lot of those points to the committee. The committee, the committee has heard those. I anticipate that the committee will be re-discussing some of those. I also, I haven't talked to the committee about this. You know, initially, I had asked a question about having Kyle Barker come back. I'm going to ask again because I think that now that we're down to two options, it may make sense to, to re-engage the conversation of when you looked at this, what were the, not talking about the cost, just when you looked at this, what were the practical considerations from building perspectives? Because the superintendent's done an excellent job of educating us on the educational aspects and some of the programming aspects and the staff aspects, all that stuff. So, you know, again, we have two more meetings that, that is largely going to be the topic of conversation at those meetings.
So Tina, from my, from my perspective, I want to get something done that does something. Because if we just keep putting up a new school, and I think that the folks, the, even the admin team that was on the meeting, somebody asked a question, I forget, I think it was Dan, does anybody think that a new school is going to pass in the next five years? Dan DeWitt. I believe it was Dan, correct me if I'm wrong. Not to a person, nobody thought anything, no, nobody thought a new school would pass. We have to do something that improves the situation. It may not be perfect, but we need to do something to improve the situation. And for me, the, the best solution, not the best solution, but a solution that will do that would be to do some repair, do, do all the repairs that are in the first five years at GMS, right at the beginning, knock them all out. And then do potentially some additional renovation within the building to centralize services and things like that. There were, part of the matrix is that maybe, maybe it's the top five, maybe it's the top ten, depending on what we think we can spend. And then redistribute the school, redistribute the kids. It can be done. We have enough room in all the schools to move kids around without having an addition. If, we don't, wouldn't even need to put an addition on Griffin. Wouldn't be perfect. I don't think it's going to be perfect. As I said the other night, I don't think we can, the town can afford it.
I disagreed with all of those statements.
That's okay. I, I, and, and totally respect your, your opinion.
Because we've looked at it. And I agree with Matt. I think it would be wise to bring Kyle back, tell him what we looked at. You were on the board at that time, Peter, and, and you, you also voted to approve the new bill to go forward.
Right, I did.
Yeah.
I supported it, and it, it was to give the, the thing that best chance.
The thing is, the thing is.
We keep forgetting that it, it failed miserably.
All right. I, I don't need to debate this anymore. I don't have a say.
I just have one question.
Yeah.
Right. Is there any consideration, and the one big thing for me in all of this, is, is there any consideration to the impact of the kids?
So.
Thank you.
So, yeah, so I mean, that was one of the biggest things about the shuffling, right, is that there is impact on not just operations, right, but there's impact on changing, on changing when kids are changing schools, right? So that has an impact on, you know, ultimately, we talk about change years, right, with curriculum, transition years, right? So we, we are impacting the transition years. Yeah, there's, there's absolutely conversation about that. And I mean, I think we've touched on educational impacts on multiple meetings now, but I, again, I really think that we're down to these two options here. I think that the next two meetings are going to be focused largely on, what does it mean if we choose one of these options over the other? Because again, it really comes down to, the, the shuffling grades really just comes down to utilization, building utilization. That's one hun, that's really all it's about.
You have three administrators shaking their heads right now.
I understand it, but I'm saying that, that's all it comes down to. So again, to your point, it's not, it's not the educational, that's not an educational option. Like, that's not what that's focused on.
I'm thinking about our youngest students, right? Our youngest students in pre-K through four at the moment, right? Notably Griffin. And I'm thinking about all the construction around them and all of the distractions around them for multiple years. And what that learning environment is for them when we're, when we're measuring eye-ready scores and all the benchmarks that we're trying to improve and what that's going to do to them. That's what I'm thinking about.
When, when, are you saying that in the context of even with respect to renovation plus addition?
Yes.
Yes.
So I think it was, it.
Tractor.
I think it's within the board's. I do.
I mean.
I think it's within the board's purview to keep an RFP broad enough to allow for the, the exploration of, I, it just, I, I think it makes sense to keep the, the RFP broad enough. That's the best I could say to that. It's within the board's purview to do that.
As you continue conversations, please keep that top of mind.
It feels like, it feels like the educational impacts of a project and the educational needs of students, especially when the committee is ranking the education, well, I think ADA is important, but I don't think that we need sprinklers. Or I think that we should have speech services located someplace else, but I don't think we need to redo the nurse's office. I don't feel like those impacts on operations and education are being considered with enough weight as, well, we got to fill our, our seats in our buildings. And, you know, I, I don't feel like they're getting a fair shake in the conversation. And just based on what I, what I heard at this past meeting.
My comment is to echo, you know, what Andrew's question is. My struggle is, I, I'm going to be honest, I did not think the redistribution would be the one of two remaining.
I didn't either.
Like, that is shocking to me that that's what's coming out of the facilities improvement committee, and that gives me pause. And I'm just being honest. Because the educational impact of that decision may not, I, I think outweighs the facility conversation. And you guys are tasked with facilities improvement, right? So, and that's a, to me, that's a different topic than educational impact. I, I don't know that, I, you know, we, we took great pride in putting together people who are really familiar with facilities and construction and all of these different aspects to it. And I, I, again, I'm very proud of the work you guys are doing, and please don't take this as a criticism. But my, the harder part is that the educational impact piece isn't necessarily, I don't know getting as much representation in FIC as it needs to, particularly, I know our admins are in there and advocating, but I, I, I feel like that piece is getting lost a little bit. And so I guess I would just say, I have a lot of concerns if redistribution solely based on utilization of numbers is what we're looking at. The educational impact and how it works to go from a three school to a two school or a seven to twelve.
We won't, we cannot go to a two school.
I just would like to, can I just reiterate one thing, though? You know, we had a survey question that asked, in determining a solution for future needs of elementary education, what should the facilities improvement committee prioritize? Lowest cost options should be the top priority. Educational needs should be the top priority. Lowest cost options and educational needs should have equal priority. Fifty-one percent of respondents selected that last one.
Yeah.
Fifteen point eight percent of respondents selected lowest cost options should be top priority. So doing the inverse of what I do all the time to, to defend educational needs, sixty-six percent of respondents care about the cost.
And eighty-four percent care about educational needs.
I understand, but you can't, you can't, you can't not pay attention to the, the cost.
I, and again, I'm not, not, I'm not advocating to not pay attention to the cost.
But the FIC is, if, if we didn't have to consider cost, there would be one option and one option only, which would be a new build.
I'm not advocating for FIC to not consider cost, Matt, but what I'm saying is that, and the same survey that you're citing, if you go to the last question, forty-one percent would strongly not support sending the people out of district, and when it came to redistributing, same thing.
Again, I haven't presented that as the recommendation from the FIC. All I've said is that that's the.
One of the two remaining.
Right, and the reason why it's one of the two remaining is it was very easy to eliminate repairs only.
Agreed.
Right?
Yeah.
The, the new school, while surprising in some regards, it was, the consensus of the committee was that they don't think that that option will pass. So that's why that was eliminated. I think that when we sit down, personally, I think that when we sit down and look at the shuffling option, we're, we are going to, we, we haven't revisited the survey results with respect to that yet. We're going to revisit that. We're going to look at the matrix again, and then we're going to have to have another conversation about the educational impacts. And I, I quite honestly would be very surprised if that was the recommendation in school board, personally.
I think as the person who presented to the facilities committee, the idea of a redistribution, right? We did it from a very, very limited informative standpoint, right, like a twelve thousand foot thing. These are some of the things you have to start to consider if you're going to even go down this road. go down this road. We need to have a serious discussion in FIC about what that road now is, because if that was ultimately the recommendation, and I'm not advocating for or against, I say this all the time in that Facility Committee, I'm here to inform you from an educational standpoint on, on these matters, right? That's my job as superintendent. You're likely needing to do a significant amount of research before committing to that, which is gonna slow down the process, right? Now, if that's ultimately the right decision for your district, you need to take your time to do that type of work, right? But it's not as simple as, and I have said this multiple times, of just plopping a hundred and eighty kids into the high school, right? And I will, I will pound my fist on this for this, it's not necessarily the seven through twelve that concerns me, it's the three-through-six configuration. I don't, I am not familiar with that instructional model, a building that's three-through-six. I've seen other configurations of different schools, I'm not saying it's impossible, but as someone who is an educator by trade and at heart, I would wanna educate myself on how that model can be successful, right, before advocating it to others, correct? Because that's the math when you look at these buildings, if you go down that reconfiguration. We talk about seven-through-twelve because that's the, the move and the Campbell, and there's the space to there, and, and there are schools that, and in that model, that are successful, that are seven-through-twelve schools, and, and so we know that's a model that is out there that works, right? I just am un, I just don't, I literally don't know about that three-through-six model. I'll talk about where my kid goes to school in Wyndham, it's a K-through-four, pre-K-through-four, five, six, seven, eight, nine-through-twelve, right? So like, that's a model I'm familiar with. The district I just left was a, one school was a pre-K-through-four, the other school was pre-K-through-six, they came together, a five-through-eight model, half the kids were there, and then the other half arrived in seventh grade, that's the model I'm familiar with. The district I left a long time ago was a K-through-five, multiple schools, filling into a middle school, that was six-through-eight, nine-through-twelve, right? Each district is different, and you gotta take time and figure out what's right for your district. But my, I just don't have a knowledge base on a three-through-six model, on what that means.
One other quick thing for you, just about that option, too, Mrs. Douglas brought this point up, which is, you know, and she's, would like to see utilization, but she also acknowledged the fact that that option may have been better served years ago before we did work to the middle school. If we could have gone to a two-school model, which still would have been very large schools, but financially speaking, right, like, if you're only looking at it from a financial perspective, the, the savings would have probably been drastically better on a two-school model, so it may not even really serve the purpose, we just haven't finished that conversation yet.
Yeah, no, and, and again, I know we're coming in mid, you guys are still working really hard, and I, I don't want you or anyone on the committee to take what I'm saying at all as criticism.
I take no personal offense to this.
Okay, good, I, I, again, I know you guys are weighing out all of the options, and it's not easy, so I appreciate the work you're doing, I just struggle a lot. It, it is, the outcome of the last meeting with the two options that were eliminated and the two that were left were quite surprising to observe from an outsider perspective.
Hopefully, one of them wasn't that surprising.
No.
One was not surprising, well, two were surprising, the fact that redistribution is what's left, and the fact that the new building is gone, those were the two surprises, to me, but again, I, I trust the process, and you guys are gonna come, I know, with a well-thought-out, well, you know, written.
Trust the process.
Proposal.
We trust. All right, this is beaten to death tonight, all right? I appreciate it, looking forward to the recommendation.
It was a big recent meeting, we have to.
It's advocating for students, so we have to do it.
All right, the time is now seven fifty-seven, are we okay with allowing our student representatives to go into there?
Of course we are.
I know you just plugged in, but, sorry.
I'm plugged in.
Just getting excited.
I know, I know, just getting warmed up for the night, okay? Thank you for listening in, enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Yep, the time is now, it's about eight o'clock, we'll open it up for public comment.
You have policy first, if you wanna do that first, in your agenda, you can do public comments.
We'll do public comment first, yeah. Policy's gonna take a few minutes probably, right?
Maybe.
Ronald Williams, fifteen review service. I just wanna, I'm gonna go back, I'm running and address the other things, because that sounds like it'll be a topic for later. The one thing I would wish to highlight is that what I said before on these wages, I went in and looked at a specific individual, I won't mention their names, and pulled out the rate increases that are published that will occur over three years. Existing year is nineteen dollars and fifty-two cents, this is per hour, twenty twenty-six is twenty dollars and nine, nine cents, twenty-seven is twenty-two thirty-five, twenty twenty-eight is twenty-three eighty-eight. That increase in total is twenty-three, twenty-two point three percent, simply on wages, and that includes the steps. This is for an individual that is in the step procedure, and if anybody wants to debate me on that, I'd be happy to, but those figures come out of that spreadsheet that you did for me, and then I did the same thing, looking at this sheet, which is the public rate, has nothing to do with FIC or anything else, it's just wage rates, and I did the same thing, and the numbers come out exactly the same. So that is the wage increase that is included with steps, and there is, as you know, a longevity payment for anybody that's over fifteen years.
So, what was the first number, Ron? The, just the first hourly and then last hourly, it went from what to what?
Nineteen fifty-two to twenty-three eighty-eight.
Okay, so that person's gonna go over that period of time, if you annualize it using rough math, from thirty-nine thousand dollars a year to, to what, twenty-three an hour?
Yep.
Twenty-three eighty-eight.
Roughly forty-six thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
So, okay, so.
One point.
High, but, just understand that hiring people who are willing to work for thirty-nine thousand dollars a year in twenty twenty-five, that, that's part of the consideration, that's why we negotiated this contract. Like, I understand when you look at it as percentage increases.
Here's the deal, right, at, at the end of the day, there seems to be some discrepancy behind, behind whatever math you're doing, Mr. Williams, and I'm not questioning whatever percentages you're calculating, but whatever math you're doing, and whatever the math is that we're being supplied by our human resources director and the superintendent, right, there seems to be conflicting information somewhere, and.
And attorneys.
What?
And our attorneys.
And our attorneys, and.
Your attorneys?
With, with all due respect.
These are agreed upon by attorneys.
With all due respect, right, not disputing any of your math here, but I'm relying upon all of the hard work by our administration that's been thoroughly vetted and reviewed at this point, and has come to the board, and the board has approved, that's what I have to go on.
I just wanna clarify the attorney piece, this isn't just our math.
Right.
Right, like, we have our attorney review it, and the LSSA has their attorney review it, and the attorneys agree these are the correct figures, this isn't just our math internally here, this is the agreed-upon people by the attorneys who are doing this stuff.
My, my point, though, is what you failed to present to the public, is the four percent raise is not just four percent on what is the current rate, what has to get factored in is there is built-in three percent steps for year one through fourteen, that if no raises were applied, everyone would get three percent raises, correct?
Only if they hit that step.
Only if they get it, not everyone gets step, though.
And that is.
Wait a minute, wait just a minute, everyone gets a step if they have a qualifying year, they work so many hours.
No, if they're on top step, they're not getting a step.
If they're what?
On top step, they don't get a step.
Wait, just a minute, I'm talking about people between years one and fourteen, when you get above fourteen, you go to longevity payments.
No, not necessarily.
That's what it states in the contract.
You have to be of service to the district for an X amount of time, someone could be hired at step fourteen, 'cause they have fourteen, let's use teachers, 'cause it's an easier example, 'cause more likely, you're gonna have teachers who get the top step. We can hire a teacher at step fourteen, because they have twenty years of teaching experience somewhere, correct? They're never likely gonna hit longevity with us, 'cause they're not gonna be internally in our district to hit that longevity mark. Longevity payments come out if, for the amount of time you've been in the district. I've been in education for twenty years, I've never hit longevity in any district, 'cause I keep changing districts, this is my fourth district.
That's fine, and, and there is an option I read in the contract, that you can place people on the step scale.
Because we can't hire people, like, that's the nature of this contract.
My point being is, there is steps in place that occur every year of an employee, don't shake your head, no.
It doesn't happen for every employee.
It has to, that's what the contract says.
No, it doesn't.
All right, this is not going anywhere productive, so we're gonna end this conversation, is there anything else you'd like to address?
I'd happy to sit down with anybody and, and, I don't think we need to debate it anymore. But that's what the figures say.
I would just like to clarify one thing about our warrant article that we put up. What we have to put up for a warrant article is the increase to our budget, that's what we're putting in there, right? This contract is going to cost the district, if it is passed, an additional two-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars. That is what the warrant article is, it's not voting on people's raises, I mean, yes, you're getting to that figure, 'cause you're factoring in the additional costs of people.
Just to clarify, for the next year?
For the next year, correct, and we give estimates for years two and three, 'cause there's a ton of variables for future years, people come and go, everything associated with that, right? And we may not even hit that two-hundred-and-six-thousand dollars, that is the maximum we would hit, because that's where we factor in from the negotiations of everything that it is. Included in that figure, because our operating budget or default budget have not been voted on, is all the positions that we are reducing by next year, but in the negotiations, we have to include that in that math, because technically, the positions haven't been cut yet. So for example, those raises for the vacant positions that are likely not gonna be in the budget next year, because the budget's gonna, article, something's gonna happen in Article One, are not gonna be there. So that two oh six represents the maximum amount of money we are adding to the budget if that contract passes, period, for eighty-seven employees, and it's not all salary, it's the cost of the employee to the district, as Ms. Falzone mentioned, it's FICA, it's retirement, and their salary all matched together, that is part of that, that's the cost of the district.
Is there anything else you'd like to address to the board tonight?
No, I'll just reiterate that what you published and what I stated is correct, and I'm happy to sit down with anybody and prove to me that I'm wrong, what did, what did the calculation you just do come up with?
It was, like, rough math, thirty-nine thousand.
No, what is, what is, what is percentage increase of those two figures?
I didn't do the percentage.
I did, I got seventeen point nine percent. No, you have to do from the first one to the fifth, fourth one.
But perhaps you could also just focus on what it's like to try to hire people for thirty-nine thousand dollars, like, that's an important piece that you seem to leave out of your math.
This conversation's done.
It's not productive.
And I'll just finish up, I got a hundred dollars a month increase in my social security, and I got a hundred and sixty-nine dollar increase in my medical because of the negotiated prescription plan, so I, I'm not getting the pay raise this year, I'm, I'm going behind. I have to pay taxes, I like a lot of other people, like, in my situation, so I don't get seven or eight percent increase every year, and I'll stop there.
Okay, thank you very much, any other public comment this evening? All right, at this time, we're gonna close public comment and go on with the rest of our agenda tonight. Next up, we have policies.
Yes, policies, the first three. We're going back.
All right, let's do it.
Um, so, we have been advised to revert back to our original language for these different policies after, by council.
Is this a result of new administration?
Yeah.
So, guidance is to revert back to the Title IX guidelines that were in place previously, so.
So that's what we're doing.
Okay.
So that's one through three, number four is a new required policy based off of changes to state law.
Okay, I've read the policies, I'm fine with them, is there anyone?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion for first read to approve policy AC, AC, R, policy ACAC, policy ACN, policy JJIC.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Mr. Shoemaker, additional discussion, all those in favor for first read, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, those carry five zero. Nothing for second read this evening, nothing for old business this evening, we'll move into school board comments. Anything else school board comments tonight?
Yeah, um, I, I have something. It's not directed to the board. If, if it makes you feel better for us to acknowledge that it's a twenty percent increase over three years, I'm willing to acknowledge that it's a twenty percent increase for some employees over three years, I don't have a problem doing that, because I know that our paraprofessionals, our food service workers, our custodians, our buildings and grounds workers, and our admin assistants at our schools, am I missing anybody, Holly? Monitors, lunch and recess monitors, are, are diamonds in the rough, and for the work that they do, and the, the value that they bring to our school district, and the impact that they have on the education of our students is profound. We had last year a crisis in our district, a crisis of education, because we could not hire paraprofessionals, we could not find food techs, we could not find custodians, because of the, of the salaries, the wages, it's really not salaries, it's wages, it's hourly wages that we were offering to those employees. This warrant article for the new contract will make a big difference for people who don't make a lot of money. We're talking about maybe four dollars an hour, is that kind of what I heard, four dollars an hour, over three years for what they do, and they're, in my opinion, and I'm gonna advocate for them, they're worth every penny and more. I know that the salaries that we've, the wages that we've negotiated are still at the low end of competitive for surrounding districts, I work in a district that pays more, base salary, beginning wages, by quite a bit, and even they have a hard time finding people. We have open positions in my district as well. The board negotiated this contract in good faith, because we know we have a need, and we need good people to fill these roles, and I'm, I, I know that times are hard, and they're hard for everybody, but as you heard, too, if, if these, if these increases don't go through, we have eighty-seven people, fifty of which live in town, who will not see any increase at all, and that, I can't, I can't abide by that. These people do important work, we're still short-staffed, if you would like to take advantage of the twenty percent increases, we can send you an application, and you can, can come work for us part-time, because it's, until you're, you're in it and you see it, and you, you understand where it's coming from, this is, in my opinion, the least we can do to support these people. That's all I'll say about it.
Full state it.
Yeah, and I'll piggyback on it, if this contract does not pass, those eighty-seven employees would probably very easily find pay in any surrounding district, and that would cripple, ripple our district.
And cost us a lot more, because we'd have to hire staff and temporary staff.
Well, we contract out, for the open positions we have now, the paraprofessionals, we pay four times as much for contracted providers.
Can I respond to that?
No.
Yeah.
We close public comment. All right, anything else for school board comments? All right, moving into manifest, we have four items to report a manifest from February fifth, two thousand twenty-five, we have payroll in the amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-nine-thousand-seven-hundred-and-fourteen dollars and twenty-two cents, we have voluntary 403B deductions and NHR for three-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and ninety-eight cents, we have NEA and LSSA dues at twenty-one-thousand-one-hundred-and-sixty-six dollars and seventy cents, as well as accounts payable for four-hundred-and-forty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars and five cents. I believe the manifest was circulated, it has three signatures.
Yep.
So we're, we're good on manifest tonight, and with that, that closes our public session this evening, and with that, we are also moving into non-public session tonight, under RSA ninety-one A three, specifically under A as well as C, I will entertain a motion to move to non-public. We have a motion by Mr. Shoemaker, a second by Mr. Klansky, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstained, that carries five zero zero, and we are moving to non-public now, thank you.
now. Thank you very much.